Motion to approve of June 9, 2020 council in June 9, 2020 special council meeting.
So moved.
Motion been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Morat?
I move we pay bills in the amount of $668,938.28.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passed unanimously. Being 7:03, we'll move into public hearing. Open the public hearing of ordinance imposing a user fee of $30 per 1,000 gallons of high-strength waste at the wastewater treatment plant. Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on the ordinance imposing the $30 fee. Move on to the public hearing of the revision to charter ordinance for city administrator position. Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. The revision of the charter ordinance for city administrator position. Moving on to public input. Anybody from the audience? No public input, we will move on to standing.
Your guest.
Do we have, um, TNC construction out there? Yeah, okay. If you keep it to five minutes, please.
Absolutely. My name is Tim Backus, this is my partner Mike Carey. We have a TNC 24/7 construction. And we came here asking you guys to consider using us possibly in the future with any city or actually personal. We are licensed and we have a group of five people. We can do basically anything. We have 15 years behind us in entity, including schooling and, uh, and, uh, Mike is our hands-on guy. I'm the money guy. I do the paperwork. I'm gonna hand these down to you guys if you don't mind passing them down. It kinda tells our history. I can say we're good at what we do. If you can give us a shot, I think it'd be pleasing what you see. On the back page, it just, it shows all that we do do. Mike has spent a lot of his time down in the valley working this city roads and whatnot. And to say we're actually located, not ever not embarrassed. Be happy to take emergency runs, jobs, get bids, whatever you choose. I'm gonna start and ask you any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to standing and special committees. Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Board of Public Works met 4:30 on Monday, July 6, 2020. First item, we've went over the wastewater treatment plant update. We looked at how much different products we're bringing in as far as phosphates, et cetera. We saw nothing out of the ordinary on that. The next item brought up was discussion and action on future W-3 improvements at the wastewater treatment plant facility. Ben Gruehl detailed the information on a proposal to improve W-3 piping for non-potable water throughout the wastewater treatment facility. The current system is too small and outdated to meet the 30 gallons per minimum flow to properly clean the screen in the new high-strength waste receiving station. Donahue and Associates provided a W-3 improvement study and an agreement to provide design and bid specs for improving the W-3 piping system throughout the plant. It's anticipated to create the design and bid specs and potentially bid out the project after the first of the year 2021. Motion made and seconded to approve Donahue and Associates to create design specifications and bid advertisements for the W-3 improvements. This will be brought to council tonight. The next item, review and act on a creation of an ordinance to designate ATV, UTV routes in the city of New London. Discussion took place between board members with input from the public regarding ATV, UTV usage on city streets. Chief Schlitter explained the concerns and discussions he has had with attorney ladders and the League of Wisconsin municipalities regarding the legality of the city creating restrictions that go above the state laws. The League's opinion is that they feel that strict conformity means municipalities are not at liberty to add additional regulation to require articles like driver's licenses, insurance, age limits, turn signals, or open intoxicant restrictions. This only means the city could restrict per state law are the time of day use, the times of year use, speed, which streets to allow access on. Because the city does not have the ability to create additional restrictions, Chief Schlitter and Chad Hirth recommended not passing the ordinance to allow ATV, UTV in the city at this time. Motion made and seconded that the city does not create an ordinance. This motion was defeated. The board decided to have staff and several board members get together to draft an ordinance for the board to review next month. Members also discussed a one-year review of the situation after an ordinance is passed to evaluate the impact and review any issues caused by these. The next item, remove the, recommend the execution of state municipal agreement for the 2025 STP urban grant program. The state awarded the city a grant of $2,947,840 for the downtown Northwater Street construction project scheduled for 2024. Executing the presented agreement officially accepts the grant from the state and commits the city following, follow the guidelines set forth by the grant. Motion made and seconded to approve this agreement. This will be brought to council tonight. The next item, discussion about cost-sharing improvements for Elkan Road in the Town of Liberty. Chad Hirth was approached by Tom Lambie from the Town of Liberty to cost-share a smear patch on Elkan Road from House Road to Basswood Lane. This road has ownership by both municipalities. This section of the road is rough due to the large heavy construction truck usage from East Ridge sub-development. Outage County Highway provided a quote to provide a smear patch in the amount of $14,000. The cost-share would be 50/50 between the two municipalities. This will be brought to council. The director's memo was included in the agenda package and reviewed by the committee. Our next month's agenda will be to look at the ATV, UTV ordinance, also the tour, the wastewater treatment plant. I make move to bring to council tonight to approve hiring Donahue and Associates to create design specifications and bid advertisements for W-3 improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
This will come to a cost of $30,000. Oh, I'm sorry. That's $30,000.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passed unanimously.
The next item, I move to bring an execution to accept the state municipal grant for 2020 to 2025 STP urban grant program.
Second. Motion been moved and seconded. Any further discussion to approve the state municipal agreement for the 2025 STP urban program grant? Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the next item is I move to bring to council tonight to split the cost on the Elkan Road. This will cost us $7,000.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the cost share split of $7,000 with Town of Liberty for the road improvement for Elkan Road. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes. Eight to one. Move on to personnel and finance, Mr. Morat.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, July 8 at 4:30 PM in the council chambers. The committee discussed the updated city administrator job description. Mr. Hirth talked about the changes from last job description, which included an addition of the emergency management director. He had any verbiage in the job description to describe a current department head duty. That verbiage was changed to a supervised role in that duty. Mullerman, Dave Morat recommended two changes to the job description. A change under economic development from exercising as the city's primary contact for promoting economic well-being to promoting the well-being. In addition, and two, an addition of quarterly review of department heads internally in addition to the annual review to present to the Finance and Personnel Committee. Motion was made by Zog and seconded by Dorsey to recommend a council approval of the city administrator job description with the changes requested. Motion carried eight zero. The building inspector position was discussed. Mr. Hirth stated that a number of calls that are current part-time contracted building inspector was unable to fill the needs of citizens in a timely manner. The building inspector position not only includes building inspection, but zoning, ADA compliance, and policies and code enforcement. There was discussion on what that position would do in the winter or down months. And Mr. Hirth and Mrs. Ratkey talked about the ADA compliance aspect of the position and the need for this to get more attention, especially in the policymaking area. Motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Zog for the city to proceed in filling the building inspector position with a full-time employee. Motion carried eight zero. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the monthly finance, financial reports. The financial directory report was discussed. There being no public comment or further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:15 PM. The next regularly scheduled finance meeting we held in the council chambers on August 5 at 4:30 PM. Then I move we adopt the charter ordinance for the city administrator. This is the second reading.
Second. Motion been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would move to change the wording again on section three. Where it states the council representative on the Economic Development Committee. What Economic Development Committee is made up of a number of council people. This should read the Economic Development Committee Chair or Vice Chair, like the other committees. So that would be my motion to change.
Agreed.
As written.
I'm sorry. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried. With that, I'd like to add to appoint the ad hoc committee for the hiring process. We'll start with the Finance and Personnel Vice Chair of Mr. Fache. Public Works Chair, Mike Barrington. Park and Recs Chair, Bob Bissaw. Economic Development Vice Chair, Fred Zog. Council President, Dave Morat. And myself, Mayor, Mark Herter. And if you all would stick around after the council meeting to further our discussion on our next meeting for that committee, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Then I move we approve the job description for the city administrator position.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the job description for city administrator position. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballot. Motion carried unanimously.
Move we approve the recruiting process for a full-time building inspector.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. To approve recruiting process for a full-time building inspector. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passed.
And move we approve the license list for July as presented.
Second.
It's been made and seconded for the license list. Any further discussion? Cast your ballots, please. Motion carried. Move on to capital equipment projects. Mr. Morat, you're up again.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Capital Equipment and Projects Committee met on Wednesday, July 8, immediately following the Finance Committee in the council room via Zoom. Finance Director Ratkey reviewed the approved items from the April 13, 2020 Capital Projects and Equipment Meeting. Public Facilities Director Chad Hirth and Fire Chief Mark Wilfer went through the capital equipment and project requests that were highlighted for the meeting and explained the purpose for their request. Motions were made and seconded, seconded and carried to recommend the council approval of a parks pickup truck in the amount of $25,000 with additional $21,500 for the bucket truck. $64,000 for the extraction tools for the fire department. Replacement porta-potties in the amount of $5,000. Municipal building roof repairs in the amount of $7,000. Park bathroom remodel plumbing and ADA in the amount of $25,000. Room, fitness room cardio equipment replacement in the amount of $6,238. And accessible pass to the park playgrounds Hatton, Pfeiffer, and Franklin in the amount of $10,000. Finance Director Ratkey suggested the next committee meeting be scheduled once the need arises for the approval of a capital equipment or capital project item, and the committee agreed. And the meeting adjourned at 5:37 PM. Then I would move we would approve the parks pickup truck for $25,000. The bucket truck for $21,500. The extraction tools for $64,000. The replacement porta-potties for $5,000. The municipal building roof repairs for $7,000. The Hatton Park bathroom remodel for $25,000. The fitness cardio equipment replacement for $6,238. And the accessible pass to park playgrounds for $10,000.
Second.
adopted and seconded. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion approved.
That's all I have for capital projects, Your Honor.
All right. Looks like we gotta move back up to the Board of Public Works. We skipped over number two, Mr. Barrington. Adopt ordinance imposing a user fee of $30 per 1,000 gallons for...
I move that we adopt an ordinance to impose $30, $30 per 1,000 gallon for high-strength waste sewage plant. This brings in extra income for us, so that's the reason for it. This is what was checked around the area for other things and this matches where it's cheaper than other areas. That's why we raised the rates.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Please cast your ballots.
Sorry about that.
Motion passed. All right. Move on to Park and Recs, Mr. Bissaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The July Park and Rec Committee meeting, excuse me, met on July 7. Meeting was called at 4:45. The agenda was approved. Motion was carried by all. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda that was not presented. Approve location in agreement with the Wolf River Art League to paint and install murals on city-owned buildings. The Wolf River Art League requested to install additional murals on city-owned facilities. The buildings include the Franklin Park Building, Hatton Park Tennis Courts, practice boards, and the river wall. Chad Hirth explained the river wall mural will be an abstract painting and is checking with the DNR to see if they have concerns with painting a wall that is in contact with the river. Motion was made, moved and seconded to recommend the council the approval of the agreement for the Wolf River Art League to paint murals in the Franklin Park Building and on the back of the Hatton Park Tennis Court practice boards. And that'll be brought to council tonight. And the reason for that is that those are city-owned buildings and they need permission to do that. They introduced Casey Zempel, the London new video producer. He's going to take Dick Johnson's place. The committee was introduced to Casey Zempel, who is taking over Richard Johnson as the city's new video producer. As Zempel settles into the new video producer position, he will be researching equipment upgrades for video capturing, editing, and broadcasting. No motion made on this item at this time. And he also has a drone license, so he'll be able to use a drone for a lot of our city parks and stuff. And there's continued discussion or recommended action about broadcasting committee meetings. The committee has been discussing the option of regular broadcasting committee meetings for several months. Chad Hirth stated he would like the committee to make a decision so he and Zempel can make plans for capturing video of committee meetings with equipment upgrades if that's a service the committee would like to provide. The reason for this is a lot of people don't think anything gets done at council meetings. They don't realize that most of the stuff is done down at the committee level. It was, motion was made and seconded the city to develop a plan to broadcast committee meetings in the future. Motion was carried by all. Director's report memo, director's memo was included in the agenda packet and reviewed by the committee. Service anniversary report, Rod Feber, pool manager, we had two years of service on July 4. Chairman's report was non-present. Committee members' report, none presented. Full agenda items, video producer, technology improvement plan. Motion was made to a move and adjourned at 5:25. I would like approval from the council to approve the location in agreement with the Wolf River Art League to paint and install murals on city-owned buildings.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve agreement with for WRAL to paint murals on the Franklin Park Building and on the back of the Hatton Park Tennis Court practice boards. Any further discussion? None, please cast your ballots. Motion passes.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, moving on to planning commission, Mr. Bissaw.
Hey, the planning commission met on June 25. Meeting was called order at 5 o'clock. Those in attendance were Chairman Bissaw, Steingraber, Basset, Galler, and Mayor Herter. Spillman, Noel, and Gabbert were excused. Others in attendance were Chad Hirth, Director of Public Services, Season Paulson, representative with the Wolf River Art League. The motion was made to adopt the agenda. Motion was carried by all. Approval of the February 27, 2020 Planning Commission minutes. Move, my motion was made by Steingraber, seconded by Galler to approve the February 27, 2020 meeting minutes. Motion was carried by 5-0. Final plot approval, review approval for London Acres. A copy of the city of the London Acres plot was presented. This plot was resubmitted as a change was requested to include a utility easement in the backyard of each property to supply electricity and communication utilities to the new homes. This was the only change from the original plot. That'll be brought to council. That motion was made by Galler, seconded by Steingraber, and approved, carried 5-0. Northern Electric Expansion Site Plan Approval. A site plan was presented for an expansion to the Northern Electric Building at 1705 Orville Drive. The plan includes a 9,725-foot square foot addition to the north side of their current facility. A site plan was reviewed by the city's contracted building inspector with no concerns identified. Motion by Steingraber, seconded by Mayor Herter to approve the site plans presented. The motion carried 5-0. The Wolf River Art League Downtown Murals. Season Paulson from the Wolf River Art League presented ideas for 18 additional murals on buildings and structures throughout the city. A question came up on adding murals to the west side of the current bumper-to-bumper building and to the east side of the bottle shop as both are considered the address and front-facing side of the facility. The city's previous building inspector felt that this would contradict the intent of the Central Business District Design Guidelines in the city's municipal code. More research and consideration will be done for those proposals. Several other proposals were to install murals on city-owned facilities, which were referred to the Parks and Rec Committee. Another proposal was to place an abstract mural on the downtown river wall on a lower section of the State Farm Insurance Building. Chad Hirth will contact the DNR to see if they have concerns with paint touching river water on those applications. Other than those considerations, the committee blessed the remaining proposals and complimented the Wolf River Art League for their efforts thus far. Motion by Steingraber, seconded by Galler to improve the murals presented except for the bumper-to-bumper, bottle shop, State Farm Insurance, and river wall proposals as more research will be done on these applications. Motion is carried by 5-0. Update on funding issues and other agenda items, none were identified. Other matters, next meeting will be July 23, 2020 at 5 o'clock. Motion was made to adjourn, meeting adjourned at 6 o'clock. I would look for council's approval for the final plot review approval for London Acres.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for approval of final plot for London Acres subdivision. Any further discussion? With none, please cast your ballot.
All I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Laurie? Motion passes nine zero. Move on to Economic Development Committee. Mr. Morat?
Thank you, Your Honor. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, June 30 at 4:30 PM in the New London City Council Chambers and via Zoom. The May 26, 2020 minutes were approved. Dave Thiel spoke about projects that are using CBDG funds in the county. He urged the city to accomplish the closing out of the loan program before the April 21 deadline, 2021 deadline, in order to keep the funds available locally. Thiel also spoke about the Wapaka County Marketing Cooperative Program. It is an advertising program to promote your community and research tool. It is an advertising program to promote your community and a research tool to identify important demographics. Morak asked Thiel and Bill Zeiner to attend next month's meeting to explain the program in more detail. April Kapitsky spoke about the Wapaka County Marketing Cooperative Program. She cited the tourism committee had been funded since 2016. She expressed concern about programs that encourage spending outside of New London. Morak stated any spending would be thoroughly reviewed with budget being a concern. Todd Hutchinson spoke about his progress to date regarding the riverfront development. He is looking at the statillary proposal, seeing what is going to work, what needs to be revised. He is reviewing the funding options and possibilities. Intends to meet with Ann Hunt and Chad Hirth in the next two weeks. Hutchinson will report progress at our next meeting. Morak and Kapitsky attended a transportation seminar that illustrated the issue of getting around for people without vehicles. The two reported was an eye-opening experience. The WIDA program is set to launch. The city joined this effort earlier this year. The pandemic slowed the launch date, but it is now ready to go. This program is a global promotion of the city to recruit businesses and encouraging, encourage people to move here. April Kapitsky gave her business update. Her reports show two new business openings. One business closing, the Wolf River Family Restaurant. One business relocation, Ratkey Ruin Insurance. There was no public comment, and the meeting adjourned at 5:55 PM. You also have in your packet copies of the monthly Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation Report. That's all I have for Economic Development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Move on to the Cemetery Committee. You have the minutes in your packet. There'll be no council action on that. Move right into Minutes and Reports. You have them as well in your packets. I have nothing to report. We'll move on. Move on to Reports of Officers and Recent Events and Announcements to the Public. Start out with the mayor's report. I appoint Bob Beesaw to the Planning Commission. Like a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? None. Please cast your ballots. Motion's been passed unanimously, nine zero. Second, I have on the agenda is the City Administrator Lou Leon has resigned from his position, and the city will be seeking applications to fill his position vacated by Mr. Leon. Lastly, I'd like to welcome Mr. Casey Zempel to our staff as our new cable producer. We look forward to working with you, Casey. Thank you. That's all I have. We'll move on to the City Clerk.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only announcement I have is the August election is our next election of note. The ballots for voting are here, but we're going to start in-person voting at City Hall. In-person absentee voting starts on Tuesday, July 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Move on to the Utility Manager, Mr. Jay Basset.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, number eight, work has been completed. Northland Electric set a transfer switch for the generator on the 17th and 18th of June. Blacktop was completed on the 19th, and landscaping was completed on the 30th. And our water crews did that landscaping themselves. I'm pretty proud of the job they did there. Line crews responded to an outage at Wolt Cheese at 2 AM on the 17th of June. The internal main breaker operated at Wolt Cheese. The crew arrived, found no operation at the sub or any problem on our equipment. Line crews responded to a call from police around 4 AM on the 18th of June. Car hit a pole, broke it off at Division and Millard Street. The pole did not cause any customers to be out of service. The crews set a new pole and made the necessary repairs the next day. Also, on the 18th at 2:07 PM, a landscape company caught a guy wire on Shauno and Henry Street crossing a breaker operation at the Northwell Mini Sub. The streetlight wire was tossed into the phase causing the breaker operation and the sexualizing fuse to blow. Line crews replaced the fuse, restoring the power to pallet one and customers on Henry Street. Electric crews finished stonework at the Southeast Sub on the 24th of June, and electric crews fixed a broke-off streetlight behind the Lynn Tank Insurance Agency. The pole was broke off by a garbage truck. I won't say what company, but I will say it was not Gration. Water crews replaced a leaky service at 606 Smith Street. They also fixed curb boxes at 1907 Wyman, 1113 Mill, 218 Wood Lane, 619 Nassau Street, and 505 Oak Ridge Lane. Electric crews responded to a breaker operation at the main sub on the Central Circuit on the 27th of June. A fault of 1,100 amps occurred, and we did not find any obvious cause of that operation. I have began the site plan and bids for the pole building at the new pole yard on the 1st of July. On the 2nd of July, we received a complaint of dirty water on Pearl and Jennings Street. Water crews ran that hydrant until the water was clear. New service work has started at the wastewater plant. The boring for that service took place on the 6th of July. Crews set a new pole for that service in June. It was on the pole replacement list, so it was due to be replaced. Electric construction is also going to begin at the Parkview School on July 4th. Electric crews were called to Shackton Street for a branch that took down a span of wire at 11 AM. The outage operated a breaker at the North Southwest Circuit, an 800-amp fault. Crews repaired the span of wire. Later that day at 6, crews were called to 1002 Wyman Street for an electric panel that shorted out before the main breaker, blowing the primary fuse on the transformer. Crews tested the transformer, restored power, and the customer needed an electrician to repair their breaker box before it could be restored. On the 7th, water crews were contacted of a service leak at 1505 Starlight Drive. Crews made that repair the next day. On the 7th of July, electric crews checked a call the office received that indicated we had a tree in Hatton Park burning in the 345 wires. Crews did find two trees in the wires, but they could not complete the work without de-energizing and removing the branches. After removal of the branches, we did the switching procedure to bring the system back to its original condition. Water crews responded to a service leak on 511 South Pearl Street. That repair took place on the 8th. Due to the high-traffic area, we had that blacktop repaired immediately on the 10th. Electric crews responded to an outage at the hospital at 1:30 PM on the 8th. We found two bayonet fuses blown on the riser pole. We did the necessary checks to make sure that we had no equipment failure and then restored that service. The light for the Police Department was installed on the 8th, and it looks like, working with Keith, we'll have that up and running in a week to a week and a half. I would like to recognize Missy Schultz for 17 years of service with the utilities, Vance Peters for eight years of service, and Jeremy Helzer for six years of service with the utilities for the month of July. And our office will be reopening on the 20th for our deferred payment customers. And that's everything I have for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Basset. Next on the agenda is Director of Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, our Rec Department, we're stepping outside and trying to offer some adult fitness classes. That's going to be Monday through Thursday nights and Saturday mornings outside of Pfeiffer Park. Participants will be required to purchase a pass from the Park and Rec Office, and social distancing is required. We ask that you bring your own yoga mat. You can see our website and Facebook page for more information on that. And then with summer in full force, we've got several construction projects that are coming up through. I was notified today that the Wapaka County Highway Department, they're going to be applying a polymer overlay to the Pearl Street and the Shauno Street bridges. The Pearl Street Bridge that's going to start on this Friday at 7:30, they're going to shut the bridge completely down. They're going to keep it closed throughout the day, and they're going to reopen it back on Saturday. The detour for that will come through on the Shauno Street Bridge. And then on Thursday, July 23rd, they're going to do the same thing at the Shauno Street Bridge and then detour everything to the Pearl Street Bridge. So just a heads up that some of those bridge closures are coming up this Friday and then next week, Thursday. And then the traffic will be detoured to the other bridge during those projects. The city itself is working with Canadian National, and we're going to be improving the railroad crossings at High Street and Industrial Loop Road. We've been talking about this for a while. I'm still trying to nail down a date with Canadian National, but the last I've been told is that sometime in the next two weeks, hopefully, that they're working with our contractor for the project, MCC. And as soon as I hear a date for sure, I'm going to get it out to everybody. But I've been told for the next two, it's supposed to happen in the next two weeks. And that'll be a similar situation when the High Street Railroad Crossing is under construction. That intersection will be closed. Everything will be detoured to the Industrial Loop Road for the project. And then same thing, when Industrial Loop Road, when that intersection is closed, everything will be detoured to the High Street intersection. So if you want to keep up on that project, if you kind of work down there and want to know, you know, how to get through, go to the city's website, find the Public Works page, and then there's a Projects tab that you can click. And I'm going to post it on there for the updates of when the project will start and such. I'm going to piggyback off of the mayor's welcome and again, welcome Casey Zempel to our staff. He's going to be a great addition, and I really foresee us taking the cable production and the cable services to the next level. Really marketing New London, marketing what the departments, all the departments in the city do. And we welcome Casey, and hopefully he's getting embarrassed. He's back in the cable room right now, switching the feed. So he's learning the ropes, and he's probably read, you know, all embarrasses his name twice at a council meeting already. And then lastly, I want to remind that the Economic Development Committee has a small business COVID grant available to assist local businesses in New London based on the related COVID costs. The details and application are on the city's website. And I do want to point out that the applications are due this Friday, July 17th. So just get that out there. Those applications are due at the end of this week. So if you're interested in that grant program, just check out the website and the application and the information's on there. Thank you much.
Thank you, Chad. Next, Chief Slater.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had two anniversaries. Ryan Glow, five years, and Todd Sarazin, 19 years. Also, just wanted to let everyone know that sometime in the near future, we are going to have a bike auction at... Probably won't be at the Police Department, might be at Hatton Park. But keep an eye on our Facebook page as we are going to start dumping off some of the old bikes that we've collected over the past couple of years. So we'll make sure to get that out to the public so that if someone needs a bike, hopefully be able to come down and get one from PD. Thank you much.
Thank you, Chief. And Fire Chief is next, and he's absent today, so no report from the chief.